Good evening. Today is October 11th, 2022. This meeting of Georgetown County Council is being called to order. It's now 5:30 PM. Welcome to all of you. We will open up with an invocation from Councilman Everett Carolina, and he will lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day in which you've blessed us. Thank you for your guidance. Thank you for wisdom and support you've bestowed upon us as we begin this meeting. We thank you for sparing Georgetown County and coastal South Carolina from extreme damage that was visited upon Florida and its residents as Ian roared through southwestern Florida. Our prayers are for those affected and for their recovery. Allow this gathering to engage in meaningful dialogue, to grow closer as a group, and strengthen the bonds of communities. Bring clarity to us as we make decisions that will affect the citizens, the businesses, the environment, and the future of Georgetown County. Continue to remind us that all that we do as stewards over the land is for the greater glory of you in service to humanity in Georgetown County. This prayer is also for peace and brotherhood in Georgetown County, peace and brotherhood in America, and peace and brotherhood worldwide. We ask of all things in your mighty name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Carolina. You all have received the... Well, just want to note for the record that we do have a quorum here present for our meeting this evening. You'll have received a copy of the agenda for this evening. May I get a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
The move by Councilman Newton is there second. Second by Councilman Goggins. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Propose. Motion carries. Agenda is approved. We're going to begin the agenda with a special presentation from... A special report really from Brandon Ellis, our Director of Emergency Services.
Good evening, Mr. Moran, members of council. Madam Administrator asked me to come this evening and give you all an update on our current efforts with Hurricane Ian. As you all are aware, the storm made landfall here on September 30th at 2:05 PM just south of Georgetown, and it brought storm surge and gusty winds to the area for several hours before and after the storm made landfall. In the coming days after that, we have initiated our recovery process. Most of our damage was limited to the immediate coastline, mostly east of Highway 17. Kind of give you a recap here of the document that I provided you all with, kind of giving you a synopsis of everything that we've done thus far and what's to come. From a residential and commercial damage perspective, our damage assessment team went out on October 1st, that Saturday morning. They spent the next two and a half to three days assessing properties. They assessed 937 properties during that time period, utilizing tens of thousands of steps according to some of our assessors who were out there walking up and down the coastline. During that time, they identified 170 properties that met the major criteria for... Major damage criteria and three additional properties that were destroyed due to fires related to the storm itself. The initial estimates, and these are initial estimates based off of their assessment, find that residential and commercial properties experienced in excess of $53 million worth of damage. We find that most of that, the majority of that's going to be covered by insurance, we believe from those initial assessments. But we're going to do our due diligence. We work with the State Emergency Management Division as well as FEMA, and we are scheduling preliminary damage assessments with those partners as early as this coming Friday to validate those damages and look at what programs might be available for those residents who were impacted. Skipping down to our public damages, we've continued in that same timeframe to assess our public damages, public infrastructure, both the responsibility of the county as well as state infrastructure such as roadways and so on and so forth. We saw everything from, you know, large amounts of sand on South Walton Wall Drive and other places on seaside roadways down to beach access. The majority of our beach accesses were destroyed or majorly damaged during this event. So far, we've estimated our damages to infrastructure in Georgetown County to be about $5.7 million, and that will count towards the state threshold established by FEMA, which has to be met for us to request that public assistance support from the federal government. That state threshold is $9 million... $9 million, $59,612.25. So we're well on our way to meet that. Just like the individual damages that I've mentioned, we will also be pursuing a joint preliminary damage assessment with FEMA for our public assistance program for those damages that can help support reimbursement on that level. Finally, I would like to recognize Team Georgetown. Once again, they stepped up to the plate. Our first responders and our emergency response agencies and emergency support agencies, they really, you know, performed selflessly again. A lot of uncertainty with this storm. You all know we were providing briefings and the updates, and it was ever-changing with every advisory. So kudos to our team. They stepped up. They made a difference, and they kept our community safe once again. So in short, that's an update of where we are, where we've been. Any questions that you all might have relevant to the storm itself and the recovery efforts that are ongoing?
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question. This new Office of Resilience, are we working with them at the state level?
Yes, sir. They will be a part of the recovery effort as well. First step is to exhaust the individual assistance process supplied by FEMA as well as the Small Business Administration potential as well. Disaster Resiliency Office is very much involved, and they'll be involved throughout the whole recovery process.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I have one. Do we know how many residents were damaged by flood? Did not have the flood insurance versus the wind damage? Has that been calculated?
We don't have that exact information at this time, how many had flood insurance versus those that don't. That will be a part of the secondary assessment process. A lot of that is hard to determine because a lot of these are secondary homes. A lot of these are rental properties. When our assessors went out, they may not have been able to make contact with the homeowner themselves. That'll be information that we gather as we do these secondary assessments and start looking at what programs might be available to support those who were impacted.
Is it a problem for a homeowner that they get wind before they get the flood? I take it. And if it was... Is it hard to determine if it was wind damage first, then the flood come in? So it should be covered under insurance under that scenario?
Usually, you know, it's case-by-case basis, I think. The majority of the damage that I think our damage assessment team saw was related to the storm surge, if I'm not mistaken. Matt here was on one of the teams. The vast majority of it was related to the storm surge that was felt in that area, you know, immediate to the ocean and immediate to the tidal marsh. We did not... We didn't see a lot of wind damage in those assessments based off the reports that we had brought back in.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Apart from damage to structures, private structures was... How about the beaches? The beaches really took a beating. So any funding in the foreseeable future from state, federal government, FEMA for any of the beach repairs?
Each of those beaches is completely different, has complete different ownership, and a lot of them are a different situation. But as a part of that joint preliminary damage assessment with FEMA, we'll be exploring, you know, what opportunities are available there as well. I know some emergency measures have been taken in some places where it was needed. But as far as ultimate long-term funding and supplemental funding, that'll be explored as we move through the process.
And then public facilities like beach crosswalks and...
Yes, sir. They'll be included as well. Those were included in our assessments. Parks and Recreation folks did a phenomenal job assessing theirs. They got those done in about a day, a day and a half. And then I know the Town of Polley's Island, they own their beach accesses, and they've assessed theirs as well. We did lose two emergency beach accesses as well. They're our first responders use, and those will be priority one to get reinstated before we start rebuilding the crossovers so that we can have that emergency access in the event that it's needed.
So we'll hear back on that sometime, wouldn't you say?
You know, in a few weeks, a few days, a few weeks. It's subject to, you know, the federal government and their time. I know that they're busy in Florida as well. But we do have a good working relationship. And in the past, it's been a couple of weeks... Couple of week turnaround before we start identifying, you know, if that disaster declaration will be granted or not.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I've got another... Well, this is really a comment. I just... The Sunday after the storm, I went over on Polley's Island to take a look for myself. And the first place I hit was the town hall, probably early afternoon. And Mr. Ellis was there. He beat me to the punch, and I was really happy to see that he was already there. And we were discussing things. And Ray Funny was up in Merle's Inlet on Wacquemaw Drive. And so I'm really proud of what they've been doing. And I guess, Brandon, is this your first tip-of-the-spear position with a hurricane in Georgetown County? Or have you been there? You know, I've been away for a while. I didn't know whether this was your first shot at being the tip of the spear.
It's the first one in this capacity. Unfortunately, had the experience of all the previous ones since 2015 in another capacity when I was with the state. But this is the first one, my capacity at the county level. And the team performed exceptionally well. We're only as good as the people we surround ourselves with, and we surround ourselves with a great team. And they make us all look good on a daily basis. So I thank them all for their support and their efforts throughout this entire storm.
How did the visit go from the Corps of Engineers as they went to the different beach sites? Did you get any feedback initially from those folks?
We weren't directly involved in that visit from my office. I know the Town of Polley's Island was, so I can't speak.
Okay, thank you. But again, great job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments from council? Yep. On behalf of council, Brandon, I think with Team Georgetown, I want to just elaborate a little on what Councilman Anderson was talking about as far as the work that was done by our Team Georgetown. We really appreciate the services that you all have provided to make sure that the residents are kept informed of the status of that particular storm. And also after the storm had hit Georgetown, to make sure that the roadways remain passable and to continue to inform the citizens of what needs to be done and where we were. So we really appreciate the work that you all have done. You know, obviously, you spent time away from your families and everything else trying to make sure that we are safe. And we appreciate the work that you have done for Georgetown County. And with that being said, I'm hoping that council will give the Team Georgetown a great big round of applause for all the services you have provided for us and the citizens here.
Thank you, sir. I know I speak for everyone involved, you know, Public Safety, Emergency Support Function folks, anyone who had a stake in the game. You know, we wouldn't have it any other way. And we'll be ready for the next one. Hurricane season's far from over, so everyone, don't forget that. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. We move down to our nonprofit Spotlight. Reach Out &amp; Read. We have a presentation by the program manager, Gail Phillips.
Thank you for the invitation and thanks to our partner, Bonnell Foundation, for suggesting us. I want to first read our position statement and then give you some information. You have, I think, some handouts and other things, fun things that I gave you so you could understand what our medical doctors do. But at Reach Out &amp; Read, we believe all families should have the tools and information they need to make reading aloud together a daily routine. Relationships are building blocks of positive growth and development for children and their caregivers. The foundational relationship that babies and toddlers experience with their caregivers in the first year of life provide this stability and supports their health, development, and well-being. When we focus on these foundations for our children, their caregivers, and families, they can only thrive now and into the future. Reach Out &amp; Read is an early childhood literacy wellness program that's implemented only through medical offices, whether it be a pediatrician, a family physician, a nurse practitioner. And to become a Reach Out &amp; Read medical office, the providers there must apply an application. They must agree to the CME online training, which is free for them. And then we set their program up in their offices. They give out a book for every child, age, a culturally appropriate book. They use that book in a developmental surveillance for the children during the well check. Many things can be... As our great providers and some of those best-of-the-world champions are here in our community in Georgetown, they use that book to identify maybe some social stress or delays. But it's a promotion to the parent. They give anticipatory guidance. You've got some little prescription pads there. They write a prescription to the parent to read to their child daily and why it's important. It increases brain development according to the American Academy of Pediatrics. Reach Out &amp; Read is the number one early childhood literacy program, promotes brain development, social emotional wellness, lessens toxic stress, school readiness, increases their vocabulary, and it's a great tool for families for bonding. Structures for young children are important, so the doctors may say to that parent, if the child's having trouble sleeping, make that first thing you do after the teeth brushing and the pajamas are on for bedtime, reading a book. You have another handout that I gave you that we made an impact report specifically for Georgetown County. We have four medical offices, and in the past year, the Home Visitation Nurse Family Partnership Program also implemented this within those first-time months. Seventeen providers currently, but through the Georgetown program and all the years we've had Reach Out &amp; Read here in this community, we've had probably hundreds of providers go through. We're in every residency program in the state, whether it be pediatrics or family residency. So a lot of those residents go through some of the local offices here. The four offices we have is Santee St. James Health Center, Georgetown Pediatrics. Then we have our first year of outreach out with St. James Santee, a program in Andrews Elementary School, Riverside Pediatrics, and Inlets Pediatrics. Those are our four offices in Georgetown. To become a Reach Out &amp; Read site, you just have to complete an application. But every provider in the office must be committed to the training and the implementation as they are trained. The little quotes at the bottom is one of our local Reach Out &amp; Read medical offices that came from Santee St. James Georgetown Pediatrics. And then on the other side, you have one with our MUSC partners, Dr. Henry Lemon on the other side. I'm going to give some time for questions, and I hope that you have some.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council for Ms. Phillips?
Just how many children do you think you're reaching out and touching in a given period of time?
In Georgetown County, 3,000 this last fiscal year. That involves about 6,500 books. We serve children from birth to five years. And so those children from one to five months, they get four books because they have four well visits. Our program can only be implemented through their well-child checkup. And then after that, it's 12 months, 18 months, six months, 12 months, 36 months, four and five.
Any additional questions or comments for Ms. Phillips?
Okay.
I've got a comment. God bless her for what she's doing.
I also gave you some sample books. These are children, one to six months. I understand that Jackie and Randy have a new baby. So give them those books.
Thank you for improving literacy throughout Georgetown County. We appreciate the services you provide. We move down to our public comment section. And I think we had agendas at the, on the podium here, if I'm not mistaken. So hopefully everyone picked up an agenda. A public comment period is included on each meeting agenda and shall be limited to 30 minutes. Each speaker will be limited to no more than three minutes. No speaker may yield his or her a lot of time to another speaker. Members of the public who wish to address council during the public input period should sign up with a clerk of council before the meeting is called to order. At the end of your three minute period, a buzzer will sound letting you know that your time has expired. And we ask that you conclude your statements promptly at the signing of that particular buzzer. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up for public comments this evening?
Mr. Chairman, we do have nine speakers signed up tonight. Each speaker will have up to three minutes. The first is Ms. Jennifer Hunt.
Thank you.
How are y'all doing? My name is Jennifer Hunt. I'm here to represent Andrews. I live in the city limits. And I was, I have two things I'd like to say. If, we have a slew of car thefts, and there are people that are walking down Beach, Poplar, South Far, and 41, and that are just walking into people's yards. I have one in my yard that came in yesterday, has, in my house. And we've got about 36 break-ins in the last two months. And I've spoken with the mayor, and they're trying to fill positions. But if I could please, if we could get a little help with the sheriff's department to get some presence to go down the roads to help us, please. Because I've lost some things in my personal vehicle. I've had seven friends literally on my road lose some things from, there's people who just walk around going through people's cars and have broken in people's cars, busted windows, and just walk on people's properties. If I could please help with, if you could please help get some presence with Georgetown County. I know we are all spread thin. I, and I do appreciate each and every, please help. And number two is Andrews is having a Andrews Heritage Festival Friday and Saturday. And I am going to be a vendor there. And I am encouraging Andrews residents, I know I'm speaking to a lot of the choir, to be present at the Georgetown County Council meetings. And I invite Mr. Anderson, Morant, Goggins, Johnson, Ms. Johnson, and Mr. Newton to come by my booth. I'm, I designed a postcard, an Andrews postcard, that you would be able to come away with. I think I'm gonna bake a pound cake. And I'm just trying to have a conversation of public awareness of how important it is for Andrews residents to be present at these meetings. I have no idea what I'm calling this. It's me baking a pound cake and making a postcard. But you are all welcome to come by and say hello. I've invited the mayor. And if anybody else wants to come by and say hello, you're welcome to come by, anybody else. And thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate all that you guys do for the community. And I'm here to talk about solar power. And I think we can all agree that we need some solar power. We need green energy, absolutely. But we don't need it in Lambert Town. My family purchased property in Lambert Town in 2005. It's 113 acres. We enjoy the deer, the ducks, the doves, the turkeys that fly by. We're surrounded by timberland. That's why we purchased the property, always to be surrounded by timberland. My role in Georgetown County, I've been here at SC Paint and Spine Specialists, we have five offices. I've always taken a blighted building, the one here on Fraser Street. I spent my time, energy, creativity to create something great out of a small building that was sitting vacant on the side of the highway. I did the same in Merle's Inlet. I did the same in Carolina Forest. I did the same up in Little River. I took a blighted property and made it something great. I'm going to get back to this. So I, my property is 900 feet from this 2,000 acre solar field. I was not notified of a solar field going in 900 feet away. I missed it by a couple hundred feet. So I apologize for not spending enough time preparation of this. I met everybody yesterday at the St. Delight's Pentecostal Holiness Treaty. My concerns are land values. So land values are going to drop next to a solar field. They have studies, the solar company has studies from their independent appraisers saying that land values increase next to a solar field. I ask each and every one of you, if that makes sense, would you buy a property next to a solar field? The answer is no. I have a realtor, a local realtor, well, there was a study done at University of Rhode Island, don't believe me, University of Rhode Island, 2021, said property values within one mile decreased from 7% to 30%. And I have that paperwork. That's January 2021. There's another study, University of Texas at Austin as well, which shows property values decrease next to a solar field. Additionally, for my hunting property, they say hunting will improve. If I'm trying to track ducks in my property, and by the way, I took a piece of timberland, and I'm making it for monoculture, meaning one, one year of planting, I'm making it multi-culture to create a better habitat for wildlife. Do you think the doves are going to fly and the turkeys and the ducks are going to fly over a solar field because it looks great to them and appealing? Absolutely not. I'm losing my enjoyment of my property, and that needs to be accounted for. So I'm not saying no to solar powder, solar power, but I'm saying maybe place it someplace else. Take a blighted property, take Busby Lake, for example. Put it on Busby Lake, which has already been approved for power at one point. Take a strip mall that, that your predecessors approved for development. Take something that's been developed that's sitting there vacant and put solar panel panels there. Don't ruin our nature. Don't, don't ruin, don't ruin this timber property. I think that's unfair. In 40% of places that these companies came in to put in solar fields, people like yourself, 40% voted it down. It doesn't have to be a done deal. 40% of proposed communities voted it down. In my office, we see 500 people, 500 of your constituents every day in my, in my five offices. They're all people that can vote in and out for the council. Those are your constituents. These are your people. It's not the power company. Let them find a place that's, that's vacant. An old shopping mall. Thank you.
Thank you, council, for coming out to the meeting last night. I've seen most of you in attendance. And those who couldn't be in attendance, you had a representative, and we thank you for that. We had asked in our previous meeting that you get more information. We don't feel that that meeting last night was fair. That was a one-sided of Silicon Ranch, and they're hired experts telling you what they wanted you to hear. I even went on record with Dr. Morant, where he heard the environmentalist was on the paid staff of Silicon Ranch. We really asked you to get your own environmentalist. We have doctors, we have other professionals that want to speak to you, and we need an open forum, a public open forum, so we can ask questions and have accountability so that you can get the right information. So somebody is going around saying it's bringing jobs. So we asked that question last night. The jobs are going to be temporary. And I was told by a representative from Silicon Ranch that most of the people will be brought in from another state. Please do not mislead our people in Georgetown County in letting them think they're for jobs. Anybody who knows me knows I'm for jobs for people. I've created a Help Wanted page on Facebook. I have over 4,500 members in Georgetown County. I am for jobs. This is not bringing jobs. But you want to talk about jobs, we have five timber companies in Lambert Town alone. They harvest that land. And if you put a solar overlay, they will no longer be able to harvest this for timberlands, and people will lose their income. There's a potential that International Paper may even lose income from this, because they'll have to go outside of the county to get the timber that they need to employ over 700 people at the International Paper location. We're asking you tonight to really do your research, to give us a meeting to where we can present facts to you and not just one side. In all fairness, you're representing us, and you need to hear the facts from us so that we can present the information, not so that you can talk amongst yourself and make decisions already. We're asking for fairness. And then we're also, excuse me, I had to write some notes this time. My time runs up so quickly. We're asking for, the deed, they purchased a property, Silicon Ranch purchased a property, and it included that they inherited their current zoning. So they spent almost $14.5 million on this property, and it is zoned for forest agriculture, which is tree harvesting. And they knew this when they purchased the property. You made $50,000 in taxes off of the sale of that property for the county. And we ask that you just allow it to remain zoned as is. They knew what they were doing. They have professionals that have advised them of this. And if you rezonate, it almost seems like you kind of cut a deal with them already, that they knew that you were going to allow for the solar power. And we know that y'all aren't doing that. We know that y'all are good, honest people. And they inherited the property. It was currently zoned, and it does not allow for solar. So we just asked, leave our timberlands alone. Lambert Town does not want to be rezoned.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to start by saying, that land out there where they want to put these panels, it has been a hunting club for years, years and years. Last year, I believe last year this time, acres and acres of that land burned to the ground. We watched it burn, burn, burn. They couldn't get paving machinery in there, couldn't get equipment in there to put the fire out. It burned. You know why? Because it's too wet. Fire wouldn't even get put out, too wet. But it burned everything in existence. You can drive down Walker Road, you can go down some of those small access roads. All of those roads just go in there. They don't, none go through because it's so wet. I don't understand how putting electricity on top of water, where that ever come into effect. But if the hunters couldn't access, I do not know how Silicon Ranch is going to be able to access it without hauling in tons and tons of field and not offset water on, you know, neighboring properties. On top of that, you know, there may be a cause for some fraudulent activity of why these immature sapling trees burned to begin with. Did they burn just to sell this land to Silicon Ranch? Who knows what's going on there? Maybe there needs to be some insight. But other than that, and where is Santee Electric in August? You know, we've heard from Silicon Ranch, so Silicon's going to buy this land, which they're saying they already have. How much are they going to turn around and develop it and make off of us, all of us, y'all, everybody watching? How much are they going to make off of us to turn around and sell it back to us? And how much are we actually going to turn around and benefit from this? Who's going to benefit? How much is, you know, my power bill going to go down? I got lived by. Am I going to get free power? Are they going to get free power? Are y'all going to get free power from council members? I mean, this is all constitutional rights we need to be answering. So I'd just say, you know, stand up, vote no to rezonate this land. It's not proper land. If they want to put these panels, when y'all generate, the station has acres upon acres. They already got a rail line going in there. So they got transportation. They don't have to busy up the roads, bring in equipment, tearing up the roads. They just paved the road, but now putting this site in, they going to tear our road up. If you already paid for the start, paid for to get repaid. They going to tear it up, leave town, and then guess who's got the first one taxed, last one considered. That's all I got to say.
My name is Pam Emerson, and I live in Lambert Town community. I have lived there for 30 years. I've come tonight to the South to speak from our community. I live on property that my husband's great granddaddy owned. And they took pride in land. My husband's granddaddy, actually, his father-in-law died when he was a little boy, and he sacrificed to keep this land for his children. He was 10 years old when he was, had no mother nor no father. And he could have sold that land, but he kept it to leave as an inheritance to his children, to his grandchildren. I mean, y'all came out last night seeing our church. We are a close knit community. We love each other. We go to church together. We may disagree, but all said and done, all sudden, we sit together worshiping the Lord together. And, you know, this big company's come in and seen this land as a potential. I rode yesterday around this land. You know how much property this covers? 11 miles. Four miles is in the heart of our community. And every morning, some of these residents got to get up, open their front door, and look at this. This is their view. They talk about wildlife. You know, most of our hunters, we, we hunt. Our husbands hunt, we've hunted, a lot of women hunt fish. This is close to our river. I rode down Wild Horse Road and looked, there was ditches still full of water, and we in the drought. I live at the ball field, dust, every time somebody comes in and out, my car's dusted up. Rode down Wild Horse Road, which is part of this, where they're going to be coming in and out. There was water literally over a foot deep still in the ditches, wetland. All the trees are gone now. Every one of these trees that they cut down in one day could accumulate and absorb 120 gallons of water a day. All these trees are gone now. So all this water and this wetland, this even wetter, you could just look at the properties I rode, I could see water just laying, laying, laying. And they're going to come in here and start drilling pylons down to put these things, digging more holes in here. Where's all this water going? It's wetlands. I mean, and like, they're saying, what does it benefit in the community coming in here tearing up our community? And why weren't we considered when this plan was even proposed about our community? Our community don't count because we don't live in the city. We're just simple people, hardworking people that love our families, love our community, and most of the people that in Lambert Town, we are related somehow down generations. And we just ask that you do not rezonate our property and help us save our community that we all love very dearly. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council. I'm Beverly Thompson. I live on St. Delight Road on several properties on St. Delight Road. We also have aired property on Walker Road that will butt up to the property that is under proposal for this rezoning. I strongly oppose the request of the rezoning of our community. We are going to, y'all are proposing to move it to public semi-public area from the current low density residential area in a forest agricultural zone to support the development of the solar pound farm. And I want everyone here tonight that is against the rezoning, stand up, please. We have a large number here tonight. And this is only a very small percentage of- We have a large number here tonight, and this is only a very small percentage of our community. And, um, that's against, that's against it, against the rezoning, y'all have to see. And we live in a rural community where we were raised to work this land. We live off the land. Uh, we want the generations after us to enjoy what we enjoy, all these resources that we have, our land. Rezoning will change the character of our community, leading to more people, more traffic, safety issues, noise, humming from the, um, poor solar place, and as well as the reduction in our property value. So therefore, our children, our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren, and so on, they're going, they're the ones that are going to read this. I may not read this, but my children and grandchildren, they're the ones that are going to read this, and they're greatly affected by the rezoning. My grandfather instilled the importance of owning property. Now, try not to get emotional, but protecting your property, preserving your property, and passing down your property. And he always said, you can make more money, but you cannot, you cannot make more land than you can. So, tonight, council, I'm asking you, save our land. Save our homes. We do not want our residential community rezoned. Thank you.
Sandra Barnhill.
Good evening. I'm Sandra Barnhill. I live at 348 Cherokee Drive in Georgetown County. I own property on Walker Road. This property is inheritance property. My grandfather bought the property. My grandmother inherited from him, my daddy from him, and then me. And my children and grandchildren will inherit this property if it's of any value, if there's any trees on it, if it's even worthy. So, um, solar panel plant is going to be detrimental to the environment, to wildlife, our properties, our health, and eventually, the chemicals, the toxins from these panels will leak down into our groundwater, eventually get to our rivers. All this needs to be taken into consideration, and this is what I believe. I believe that in 50 years, maybe, maybe sooner, we're going to be seeing commercials on TV, if there's still TV around, just like these Camp Lejeune commercials. Our children will see them. I may not see it, but my grandchildren, great-grandchildren will. And it's, uh, I want you to consider our children and what this solar farm will do in their lifetime. So, I plead with you, councilmen and women, councilpeople, do not rezone this area for solar panels. Thank you.
Connor Echols.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Connor Echols with Silicon Ranch. We participated in the committee meeting for the Lambert Solar Projects. Many of our folks were here last night, as have you. So, thank you for your attendance. We enjoyed engaging with the community on the projects and answered any questions on the community had. Uh, if there are any other questions that the community has, we'd be happy to answer them and follow with your, with answers. Thank you again for your time, and thank you again for attending yesterday and listening to us. Thank you.
That's our final speaker for tonight.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We move on with our agenda. Now, two matters on the consent agenda were approved by virtue of the agenda approval process. Permit number 22-058, user fee road construction on Trey Avenue. It's a recommendation to award a contract to Green Wave Construction. Contract number 20-046, task order number 11, Pomero's Enlist Dredge Evaluation and Permitting. It's recommendation to approve task order 11 with GEL Engineering. We move down to the third reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 22-31, to rezonate one acre, no, to rezonate, I'm sorry, to rezonate one parcel totaling approximately 8.796 acres located on the northern corner of Martha of the King Road and Pedigree Drive, TMS number 04-0413-047-00-00, from one half-acre residential to flex design district. Ms. Richardson, planning director.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This request is for what's referred to as the retreat at stables, and as you said, it is 8.8 acres at the corner.
Mr. Chairman, could I, um, Ms. Richardson, could I get you to speak closer into the mic? I have no idea what you're saying.
Is that better?
Yes, it is.
Okay. This is 8.8 acres, and this rezoning request from Old Kings Highway LLC to amend the zoning from our one-half acre to a flexible design district. Um, we reviewed this project in depth at second reading. We have not had any changes since then. Um, as a quick reminder, this is for 22 single-family home sites. Future land use map designates this property for medium density. The proposed density is 3.91 units per acre, which agrees with the comp plan designation. Change to the map is not needed. We have proposed the following conditions to the plan if it is approved. An increase to the wetland buffer setbacks to 10 feet, final approvals from the agencies, a review of the tree removal plan, and a dedicated easement for the bike path on MLK. The Planning Commission, again, voted unanimously to recommend approval for the proposed rezoning.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Is there any question from council? For Ms. Richardson. Seeing that, it's a motion regarding ordinance number 22-31.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we do approve ordinance number 22-31.
We have a motion for approval from Councilman Galkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Newton. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We move down to ordinance number 22-32, an ordinance to amend the Woodside Village Plan Development located on the west side of Highway 17 bypass at the southwest intersection of Bellamy Road, further identified as TMS number 41-0119-003-06-00, to add car wash facilities to the list of permitted uses. Ms. Richardson.
Yes, this involves phase three of the Woodside Village Plan Development, which is approximately three acres, and they are proposing to cut out 2.09 acres that front on Highway 17 for a new car wash. Um, again, we haven't had any changes to this plan since second reading approval. Um, the car wash is proposed to be a one-bay, 120-foot tunnel car wash with an area for 20 vacuums and 1,300 square feet of office space. As a reminder, the building and any associated fencing and signage will have to meet the architectural overlay requirements. This property is designated as commercial on the future land use map. A change is not needed to facilitate the request. Staff recommended a list of conditions that are in number 13 of your staff report. Those are included in the proposed ordinance. The Planning Commission recommended approval for this request with a vote of five to one at their meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any question for Ms. Richardson from council?
Ms. Richardson, was there any, um, public comments on the planning commission?
No, sir, only the applicant.
Only the applicant?
Yes, sir. Uh, we did receive, not, um, to be misleading, we did receive a comment from the Sterling Point neighborhood after the meeting, which was included in your packet, with some concerns, and the applicant provided a rebuttal to those concerns as well.
Thank you. Is there a motion regarding ordinance number 22-32?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we do approve, um, ordinance number 22-32.
We have a motion for approval from Councilman Galkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Five, one. We move down to second reading of ordinances. Ordinance, is that's good one? Oh, 10, oh, 23, okay. I'm sorry. Ordinance number 20, I saw Ms. Richardson still standing. Okay. Ordinance number 22-33, to rezonate two parcels located on Highway 17 bypass at its intersection with Kokina Avenue and Meraz Enlist. TMS number 41-0119-032-02-02, and 41-0119-032-02-03, from a flex design district to general commercial. Ms. Richardson.
Yes, sir. I think as one of the councilmembers said, this is basically taking it back to what it was. This applicant is requesting that the 3.23-acre tract be rezoned back to its original general commercial zoning. Um, it was previously FDD, and it was provided for a very specific use of a brewery and associated uses. The, any new development under general commercial zoning will also have to meet the overlay requirements. Future land use map shows this property as commercial, which is in keeping with the request. Um, again, we have amended our tree ordinance since this plan was approved, so the 13 of the trees on the tract will be required to remain unless there is a variance granted on the site. And the Planning Commission recommended, um, approval for this proposed rezoning as well.
Thank you. Any question for Ms. Richardson? Seeing that, it's a motion regarding ordinance number 22-33.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve ordinance number 22-33.
We have a motion for approval from Councilman Anderson. Is there a second?
Well, second.
Second from Councilman Galkins. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Richardson. We now move on down to second reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 22-34, amendments to the fiscal year 2022, 23, 23 budget ordinance. Ms. Langston, our finance director.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, County Council. Um, ordinance number 2234 is commonly referred to as the rollover ordinance. Um, projects and purchases described on the spreadsheet that's attached to your agenda item are projects that are, that were budgeted but not completed in fiscal year 22. We're asking that you roll forward the funding for those projects and purchases to '23 so that they may be completed. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Langston. Are there any questions from council?
Um, I have one. Mr. Chairman, Ms. Langston, how much, um, not the number of projects, but how much money are we talking about, our rollover?
I didn't total all of it, but it looks like about... five million.
About five million?
Yeah, between all the funds. I mean, it's in every fund.
I know we do this every year. Is that standing about standard what we normally do?
About right. About the same.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Langston? Is there a motion regarding ordinance number 22-34?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve, uh, ordinance number 22-34.
We have a motion from Councilman Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
A second from Councilor Johnson. Do we have a motion to amend, to incorporate the proposed text?
So moved.
It's moved by Councilman Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Newton, or Newton, okay. We first vote on the amended motion. All in favor of the amended motion, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Now, we go back to the main motion with the incorporated text. All in favor? Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Langston. We now move down to the first reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 22-36, and the first reading of ordinance will be read into the record only, by title only. Ordinance number 22-36, an amendment to the comprehensive plan, future land use map, to reclassify a 12.66-acre parcel located on the west side of Pedigree Drive across from its intersection with Commerce Drive, further identified as TMS number 04-0203-189-02-00, from commercial to high-density residential. Ordinance number 22-37, an amendment to the Polis Island Business Commons Plan Development, TMS number 04-0203-189-02-00, to allow for a mixed use of commercial and 19 multifamily units. We move down to our approval of minutes from our meeting on September 27, 2022. I think the minutes were included within your package. Is there a motion regarding those particular minutes?
So moved.
Is moved for approval of the minutes of September 27, 2022. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnson. Any discussion? Please note that the motion was made by Councilman Newton, the main motion. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. There is no executive session this evening. Is there any further business coming before council? Seeing that, is there, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm for adjournment.
Okay, moved by Councilor Johnson for adjournment. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Galkins. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. We stand adjourned. Motion carries. We stand adjourned. Thank you all for coming.